You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the December 14th Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board of Education. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance. I would also like to say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever created and ever used
Please remain standing during our invocation given by Vice Chair Calvert-Hayes.
Thank you. We pray to our Maker. We thank you for this wonderful season. Bless us tonight as we celebrate our time together. Help us to be kind to each other and realize why we're all here, and that is for our students, our teachers, for our kids, and we are so happy that we are going to have the time together tonight to bring about even better things for our school. Protect our kids and bless our teachers always. We ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Board Member Bohannon, second for Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? All of favor? That's unanimous. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. First, we have the Winston-Salem Tennis Tournament. Alexis McCoy, is Alexis giving the...okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Chaplin, Kaplan, members of the board, and Ms. McManus. I'm Alexis McCoy, the Assistant Athletic Director for our school system. I am here tonight to introduce Mr. Jeff Ryan from the Winston-Salem Open. The Winston-Salem Open has been supporting Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' middle school programs for several years now, and Mr. Ryan is here to present this year's donation.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Jeff Ryan. I'm the Executive Director of Winston-Salem Professional Tennis and also the Tournament Director of the Winston-Salem Open, the annual men's ATP tennis event here in Winston. Tonight, I'm pleased to present a check in the amount of $25,000, which is part of the net excess of this summer's Winston-Salem Open. We make this donation for the benefit of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Middle School Athletics. Our organization is very proud to make this donation because it continues to be a top priority for us to support the community that so supports us. We know athletics are important, especially in middle school, where we know life can be a little extra challenging for our young people. After-school teams allow students to build friendships and perhaps feel a greater sense of belonging. We want to encourage young folks to be active and stay active. We're hopeful this gift will assist those schools that may not have access to the kind of financial resources needed for uniforms, coaches, supplies, and all the other items required to have middle school athletics. So in closing, let me just express thanks and appreciation as well to the teachers, coaches, school staff, administrators. You are, after all, entrusted with our most precious asset, the students who will become our future leaders. Thank you and good evening.
That's just incredible and very generous. Thank you. Gosh. Next, we have, we are going to celebrate the Women's Golf State Champions from Reagan High School.
Good evening again. Thank you for welcoming us here this evening. We're excited to recognize our 2021 North Carolina High School Athletic Association State Champions for the fall season. First, I would like to recognize and thank school administration from Reagan and Mount Tabor High School who are present with us this evening. The Reagan Principal, Mr. Brad Royal, Athletic Director, Mr. Mitch Adams, Mount Tabor Principal, Mr. Ed Weiss, and Athletic Director, Mr. Frank Martin. Thank you for all your support and your work with our high school athletes. Secondly, to the coaches, thank you for your commitment to our athletes. I know that hours are long, but the passion and attention to our athletes provide such a difference. First, we'd like to recognize the four A girls golf state champions, Reagan Raiders. This was Reagan's third girls golf state championship. Head Coach Jay Alward has a few words and will introduce the team.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you for the support that we received from Reagan High School, the parents, and most importantly, the effort that these young women put forth. Some of you may know or may not know that at the end of the spring of 2021, this team was ranked number one in the nation by the North Carolina High School Golf Association. Over the past year, they have set multiple state records, including a state team record of 87 on nine holes, which the prior record was 101 set by Reagan in 2018. The state individual nine-hole record was, is held now by Morgan Ketchum and Macy Pate, who both shot 27 on that day. They did it on the same day. Also, Morgan Ketchum won the individual state title and Macy Pate was second. Macy Pate also shot a 57 this year that acclaimed national attention. Reagan ended up setting the state championship high school record by 20 strokes this year, and Morgan Ketchum was our individual champion, and she fired a 65 on the final round, which eclipsed the previous state record of 67 that was set in 2003. So, we own all but one record in the State High School Athletic Association Record Book based off of this team, and, you know, I just can't say enough about how phenomenal they are and how, how hard that they, they work and everything on their own and put forth an incredible amount of effort. So, if you would, we're going to go ahead and announce some people. Morgan Ketchum, who's a senior, and she'll be attending Virginia Tech next year. Macy Pate is a sophomore. Anna Howerton is a junior. Ruth Ann Asbill is a senior. Jenany Barafi is a senior. Campbell Cole is a freshman. And Francis Donnie is a sophomore. And I'd very much like to thank Mary Kate Bowman-Chote, who is the coach with me, and she is also the band director at Haynes', and so the success of that program comes from her, and the success for our golf program comes from her. Much thank you very much.
Congratulations. That's just wonderful. We next would like to recognize the men's cross-country state champions from Mount Tabor High School.
This is Mount Tabor's fifth state men's cross-country state championship. Head Coach Patrick Cromwell here is to say a few words and introduce the team members.
Thank you for having us tonight. It's a pleasure to work for Mount Tabor High School and the long tradition we have in cross-country. Wouldn't be possible without our administration, parent support, and a great group of assistant coaches, Greg Fisher, Chris Page, and Bill Lefler. This group ran 1558 average at the course at Kernersville this year. This is where the state meet has been held for the last 13 years, and that was the fastest average in, in state history. So, they too are one of the best in North Carolina history. They've been ranked as high as 15th in the nation this year, and they got the opportunity to travel to Alabama last Saturday to compete in the national championships, which was a great experience for us. I'd like to introduce our members of our team right now. Will Soule was your individual state champion. He will be attending University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. If you could hold your applause till the end here, real quick. Davis Potter, he finished in sixth place and was All-State. He is undecided where he will be going to school, but he has a great list of schools to choose from. Douglas Gladhill is a senior. He recently signed, as of yesterday, to compete with UNC Charlotte beginning next year. Next, we have Junior Andrew Burrell, Senior Lucas Plitt, Junior Jeremy Kern, Junior Luke Armentraut, Senior Mac Barrett, and Junior Connor Riley and Junior Connor Inman. So, we will lose five seniors, but we have five great juniors returning to hopefully continue the tradition for Mount Tabor Cross Country, your 2021 state champions.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have our board spotlight video.
On a cold December morning, the masonry class at Kennedy High School parted work mixing up mortar, leading the way, masonry teacher Dean Bagnoni. The Pennsylvania native grew up in a masonry family, but actually started his career at Kennedy nine years ago as a history teacher.
So, I always thought I would like to do masonry work and teach, you know? You have summers off, lay brick, and teach history.
But former Principal Dr. Leslie Alexander had a different idea for him.
She knew I was a brick player. She said, "You want to start a masonry program?" And that's where I am, so.
For the past seven and a half years, he's been right where he feels he belongs, teaching his students at Kennedy High School and the Career Center, one of the oldest and most important professions in the world.
It's just very satisfying to build something with your hands, you know? It's just like a masonry job, you know? You come in, it's a pile of material, and you have to put it together and create what, you know, your client wants or whatever the blueprint says. And these students come in, and the first thing I ask them is, "What's a trowel?" And unless they come from a family of masons, they don't know. And by the time they leave, they're building structures, you know, they're working internships, and they have a skill that they'll have for the rest of their lives.
So, like, if this is from here to here, if it's going downhill one inch?
His teaching is getting noticed. Bagnoni has been named the recipient of the 2021 North Carolina Home Builders Association Construction Trades Teacher of the Year.
It's a pat on the back, right? It's, you know, so that always feels good. But I feel like overall, I'm, I'm improving as an instructor. If you could be here like seven years ago when we started, we didn't have anything in here. Pine Hall donated a pile of brick, and I'm like, "Okay, how do I teach this?" I didn't have any formal training in teaching a trade. You know, I learned on the job. I know there's a lot of great programs out there. They chose this program. I'm thankful because it shines light on what we're doing here, and hopefully it'll attract more students. Masonry is a skill that takes a long time to acquire. You can leave here with a, with a really good skill level. I believe one of the greatest things about this trade is even though in high school, you really don't know exactly where you're heading in life. You know, you graduate, you get into the real world, and you kind of can get scared during the headlights, right? But I think that learning a skill gives you a confidence to at least, you know, make a step in the right direction, you know, going forward.
Let's throw the spotlight on a couple of elementary schools in our district that have been recognized by the national publication, U.S. News &amp; World Report. They have ranked Sherwood Forest and Metal Arc Elementary in the top 25 elementary schools in North Carolina. Sherwood Forest ranks 12th, and Metal Arc Elementary was ranked 25th.
The thing that's unique about our school, we have a veteran faculty that's very invested in the community. They've been here a long time. They care about kids' success. They care about, you know, the whole child and kids being successful and really being prepared to go to middle school once they leave us and go on to a bright future.
I think what makes this school unique is just the, the people. The people that are here, the collaboration that happens, the families that work together with the school, the teachers that are really professional, that work with the families and try to meet the individual needs of all the students.
Congratulations to the staff at Metal Arc and Sherwood Forest on the honor. Everyone at Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is proud of all you do for our students. An exciting day on the campus of Northwest Middle School as they got the chance to usher in a whole new world of learning by unveiling the Verizon Innovative Learning Lab. A state-of-the-art lab has all kinds of technology that will give these students hands-on experience with science, engineering, and design, and forward-thinking technologies such as augmented reality, virtual reality, and artificial intelligence. According to Principal Frida Smith, this is a game changer for the school and their students.
It is very exciting. Technology, of course, is not going away, so we have to find ways to, to embrace it, and more importantly, we have to find ways to reach all children. All children are not going to learn just by a sit-and-get. In this lab, they're not just sitting. They're actually being involved in different activities, 3D printing and coding and different things like that.
The lab was made possible through a partnership with Verizon, the Heart of America Foundation, and Arizona State University. It is the second Verizon Innovative Learning Lab in our district, joining the other one over at East Forsyth Middle School. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools would like to thank everyone that had a hand in making this a reality. We appreciate the commitment you've shown to our students' learning. Let's give a shout-out to the West Forsyth Varsity Cheerleaders. This veteran Titan squad, led by seven seniors, won the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's Varsity Game Day Division One State Championship, held at the Raleigh Convention Center on December 4th. It's their second straight state title after winning the inaugural event last year. This year, the Athletic Association awarded another prize to go after, the Tar Heel Trophy. It was awarded to the team with the most points in Division One and Two. The Lady Titans varsity cheerleading squad took home that trophy as well, beating out 30 other teams. Congratulations, West Forsyth Varsity Cheerleaders. You make everyone here, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, proud.
This event is just so powerful for our student-athletes, for our basketball players that love this game.
This week, a bracket release luncheon officially tipped off one of the oldest holiday high school basketball tournaments in the country. The Frank Spencer Holiday Classic, presented by Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and Adrian Health Wake Forest Baptist, includes all 12 of our district's high school varsity men's basketball teams, along with four other teams in the area. It will be played December 20th through December 23rd at North Forsyth and RJ Reynolds.
This is the 46th year of, of that tournament. So, somewhere along the way, we didn't have a girls' tournament, so the Sportsman's Club of Winston-Salem decided to start a girls' tournament. So, they run that tournament in coordination with us for our girls. So, and that just finished their 32nd year.
The Mary Garber Holiday Tipoff Classic Women's Basketball Tournament took place November 22nd through the 24th at Glenn and Atkins High Schools. The East Forsyth Lady Eagles got the win in the Belle Davis Pitt Bracket to pick up their first championship in the history of the tournament. For the schools and the athletes, a victory in either one of these prestigious events is very special.
You know, within our county, when one of our teams won it, you know, it gives you bragging rights for a year, and then you have to try to defend it the next year. So, it means a lot to our schools.
Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is proud to be part of both of these longstanding holiday traditions. To get more information on this year's Frank Spencer Holiday Classic, head over to our website, and that is a look at this month's Board of Education Spotlight.
Thank you. That was great. At this time, we will hear public comments on agenda items. Please know that we reserve this time to hear comments only on the items that are on tonight's agenda, either for action or discussion. When you are called upon to speak, stop up at the green X at the podium, direct your comments to me as the chair, and know that while we are not able to respond, I may direct you to a staff member who can answer a question when appropriate. We do ask that you be respectful, kind, and know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. While we hope it does not, should the comments become personal attacks, contentious or otherwise disruptive, I reserve the right to end the comment, period. You'll have two minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always you can email us directly, and I'm going to call up four at a time so that we can expedite. First, I'd like to call Rhonda Mays, and then Harold Mustache, Alan Daniel, and Nikki Reed.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, the Board Superintendent McManus. I'm here tonight to talk about the mask mandate. I'm asking you to continue to have the masks as mandatory in our schools. What we do know is that we've been able to keep our doors open, and our students have been able to attend school on a regular basis. What we do know is that another district that went mask optional is back to a mask mandate. We want our students in school each and every day, and we have been able to do that. I can't say definitely, and I'm not going to say, that the masks have done all of that. There's a combination of many things. I'm not a scientist. But what I can say is that we're, we're having our doors open. Our students are having instruction face-to-face with their teachers. They're receiving an education. They're able to get the assistance that they need in their studies. What I do know is that the rate of infection is continuing to be high in our area. What I do know is that people who have been impacted by COVID, the long-term effects have been just as devastating as actually having COVID. I have several friends who've contracted COVID, and they have healed from it, but they're still having issues with their breathing and various other things. So, I ask you to please continue to have masks mandatory in our school district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I think it's important for us to think about how we frame this discussion. I know in some of the previous meetings, a lot of the framing has been about the science and getting into the weeds on the science. You know, are masks effective? Are they not effective? And some of that's somewhat useful, but I think the better way to think about this is not about the science. It's about who do we want to be in, in the sense of how do we give parents the agency that they ought to have over their kids? The issue here is about whether or not we have a board that tells our kids what to do, or we have parents telling them what to do. I mean, I don't think anybody's asking for, you know, to, for the board to mandate not having masks. I don't think anybody's saying, "Get rid of all the masks in the schools." That's not what I'm up here for. I'm up here saying, "Give parents a choice," because essentially every time that you vote to keep masks, you're saying, "Parents, you don't have a choice." And that's unfortunate. There, there can be masks in schools. You know, kids, plenty of kids can wear masks if they want to. Encourage it, but give parents the option for that, let them look at the signs and figure out what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan. Welcome to the chair seat.
Thank you.
And members of the board, and a Merry Christmas to everyone. We have over 500 vacancies in the district. You're going to address salaries tonight. Over 300 of those are in the classroom. There are going to be more after Christmas. I have spoken to educators who have told me that it would take more than one hand to count the number of educators they know that are not coming back after Christmas. There's only one reason any job goes unfulfilled: you aren't paying enough. Now, the reasons you aren't paying enough may be because the job doesn't have the support it needs from administration, salary-wise, any number of reasons. I've heard we can't even get applicants, so we don't even get a chance to talk about salary. See reason number one. What I hear from educators is that the job is demoralizing. The state and the district keep asking for more and more, but they aren't giving anymore. No more support for teachers who try to maintain order in the classroom. What teachers hear is, "You're not building relationships." You can't send four students out of the same classroom. Why not? Because they don't learn if they're not in the classroom. Well, let those four stay, and nobody in the classroom learns. Okay? Teachers know this. I'm not saying send kids home. I used to. I don't anymore. They need to be in school. I'm saying take them out of the classroom where they're disruptive and put them in a situation that is highly structured where they get the help they need, but help our teachers maintain their sanity and their safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Reed?
Hi there. I am actually not talking about myself tonight. I'm going to talk on behalf of another person in conservative women of Forsyth County. We've got about 600 members, and a lot of them can't make it. So, this is from Kim Felton. "This morning, as I dropped my granddaughter off at school, the staff opened the door. No good morning, no great, it's a great day. Just, where's your mask? Is that what we've come to with our children, our most precious gift? I walked the school grounds in the afternoon, and my daughter was in, granddaughter was in tutoring, and everywhere was lying on the ground filthy masks. Last year, my granddaughter was in gym running. It was a very hot day, and gym is very hot. She was in kindergarten. My other granddaughter saw her crying and told me about it. She said I could not go." She said I could not go to her, but she was crying, Nana. I asked my granddaughter about it, and she said the teacher kept making me run, and I couldn't get my breath, and I couldn't take my mask off. I said, why didn't you tell the teacher? She said, because you can't even interrupt unless it's an emergency. I said, Marilyn, not being able to breathe is an emergency. I called this school, and guess what their response was? We'll get her a thinner mask. The truth is, children do not die of COVID. They're not dying of COVID. The truth is, the majority of Americans are vaccinated, and the ones that are still getting COVID are dying of it. This is an adult issue, it's not the children's issue. The truth is, COVID will never get, go away, and you're making the children pay. Free the children, maybe get over yourselves in 2022, and let the parents have the choice of their own children. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have, and I apologize if I am not pronouncing your name correctly, Dave Lamoree, Lamoree? Is that correct? Close enough, okay. And I know that your daughter, you would like for your daughter to speak.
Yes, Ella.
Ella, she's, she has COVID, but she's going to speak.
She doesn't have COVID, but she would like to speak.
Okay, okay. And then Laura Lester, and then Aljabar. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you. So my name is Dave Lamoree. I'm a parent of three students in Forsyth County, and I'd like to talk to you about the strong schools NC Toolkit that I feel is flawed and discriminates against kids that are not vaccinated. My wife and I have been notified in the last couple of weeks that, by the school system, that two of our kids have now been in close contact situations this month with COVID-infected individuals, and get this, both from students that were already vaccinated. So let's talk about the exposure policies. My daughter is one of the close contact notifications that we received last week. She plays volleyball at Clemens Middle School and is currently quarantined for ten days. She has no symptoms, she's healthy, and has received a negative COVID antigen test today. She was told by the athletic director that masks are no longer mandatory for playing a sport, and several players, including my daughter, were not wearing masks while playing last Thursday. The vaccinated students were allowed to return to school and play, but the unvaccinated had to quarantine. Those vaccinated players still have a chance of becoming infected, and obviously, still have a chance of spreading the virus to healthy students, yet they're in school. Note, two close contact situations that we experienced were by students that had been vaccinated. So why are we continuing to quarantine and contact trace? How many students in quarantine actually end up developing symptoms? How many children are actually ending, are actually in quarantine due to a vaccinated students? We did receive a text from the school stating that our daughter Ella could take a test today, twelve fourteen, and then return to school on Thursday if it was negative, but I was told by the COVID coordinator at Clemens Middle School that this won't start until January. However, in the NC Toolkit on page seventeen, it says, as long as they are not showing symptoms, they can return after seven days with a negative test no earlier than day five. Would love some clarification on this tonight. Everybody in the school system needs to get on the same page, because clearly they're not.
Thank you.
And?
And Ella?
Yeah, we'll see if we can get her. Where's the mic? Hey Ella?
Yep.
Go ahead, you're on.
Okay. My name is Ella Lamoree, I am a seventh grader at Clemens Middle. I've been quarantined because I'm not vaccinated. In the school toolkit, close contact is defined as someone who is within six feet for fifteen minutes or over a twenty-four hour period. Even though I was not within six feet for more than fifteen minutes of the student, I'm not allowed to come back to school for ten days because I was not vaccinated. This is the only difference between me and several other players who got to stay and play the conference semifinals volleyball game. Several players, including myself, when eating snack, were not wearing masks because we have been told that it wasn't required anymore to wear them on the court or when eating snacks. At no time did they say that if you were not vaccinated, you should keep your mask on. Just because these players are vaccinated doesn't mean that they aren't going to spread the virus. I was quarantined by a vaccinated student who got COVID. I'm healthy and should be allowed to return to school. I took a COVID test this afternoon, and it was negative. I'm missing valuable time in the classroom and already missed the chance to help my team make it to the finals for volleyball. The main point that I want everyone to know is that there is no difference if you are vaccinated or not. You are still able to spread the virus. It is not fair to take away our education just because we are not vaccinated. Thank you.
Ella, thank you so very much for speaking to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Laura Lester.
Thank you so much. Last meeting, there was a gentleman, and I think, no, it wasn't you. There was a gentleman that was here that was sitting right up front that asked why we were so mad. Why is everybody so mad about the masks? And I would like to tell you why we're mad. I have been, I had a student in the school system for thirteen years, and I used to love this school system. I loved it, I respected it, I had confidence that you guys were looking out for my child. And I don't even recognize where we are now. I don't recognize the school, I don't have confidence in the school, I don't believe that you have the children's best interests in heart. And, you know, we come up here, and I've been attending meetings virtually since COVID happened, in person since we've been in person. We've come up, we've spoken, we've talked about masks, I've emailed, we speak out till we're blue in the face, and we're ignored. That's why we're mad. Nobody's listening to what the parents are saying. Or you're listening, and you're just like, well, I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote. And I don't really understand it. And we're frustrated because we see what's going on, and you guys aren't, you're not paying attention to what's going on, you don't see what's really going on. And so it's very, very frustrating to us because we know that masks don't work. Masks will not stop the spread of a virus that is zero point one microns in diameter. And masks don't work, the tests don't work, the lockdowns don't work, the shots don't work. They don't stop the spread of viruses, they don't stop transmission, they may keep you from maybe getting ill, we don't know that, who knows? Young people just don't get sick. I've had COVID, my kid had COVID, my husband had COVID. We all survived just fine. And so, asking again to make masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you. Aljabar?
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Board Members, Superintendent McManus.
Good evening.
The last time I was here, I was drinking chocolate milk. Today, I'm drinking white milk. But guess what? It all digests well. You know, it's really a shame when people come and stand before you and have their kids say their noses are bleeding. This is the best humidifier you can find except the one you plug in the wall. So let's be real, this is a political ploy. Watch the vote. This is a political ploy. It's not fair, and first of all, I want to thank y'all for keeping our kids safe. Thank you. For those of you who consider masks should be worn, you kept our kids safe, that's what we're here for. We want to keep our kids safe in school, learning. A parent's choice is at home. Once that parent releases that kid to the school system, you are the governing body over the policy.
Please be respectful. Nope, not you, the audience.
You are the governing over the policy of the school system. When you come to a conclusion that our kids need to wear masks, and the lady said, you obviously got one to know why everybody was angry. Well, when you act the way some people have been acting when they come in here, you're angry, and I don't understand why, because we trying to do the best we can with your children. You may disagree. I want each and every one of you to have the best holiday that you can have, enjoy your family, and get ready for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Wallace, Tabitha Hackett, Myra Bumgardner, Maria Mahala, and Robert Capizzi.
The last board meeting, my son asked me to speak. He just turned seven. So, because people like that is why I didn't want him to speak. But he asked me, and I said yes. He wrote down what he wanted to say. It was only a few short sentences, but it was what he feels wearing a mask all day every day. He gets really upset at the nosebleeds he's been having since being forced to wear a mask all day, five days a week. When I come to speak at these board meetings, it is not political for me, it's personal. It's my child's story and the story of hundreds of parents I've spoken to. I'm asking for parents to be able to make decisions for their children's health and well-being. That's the way it's supposed to be. Next, quarantining. We have to do something about the length of our children, the length of time our children are out of school due to quarantine. I've reached out to all of you already, and thank you the ones who bothered to respond. When my husband, my husband got COVID, the health department told myself, my husband, my son, we had to quarantine for ten days. The school made my son quarantine for twenty-four days. Why is that the school is saying so much longer than the health department? My son missed almost an entire month of school, and he never got COVID. If kids get a cough, sore throat, a sniffle, or any of the endless symptoms of COVID, or actually any allergies, they have to quarantine ten days for a negative test. Do you know how hard it is to get a small child a COVID test? You can't just drive up to your local CVS. And what about parents that don't have insurance? It makes it even harder. Y'all are going to waste all that money on testing healthy children and extracurriculars, so why not instead maybe have a place to test in schools with parental consent for children who are being made to quarantine? I thought the whole reasoning for forcing your children to be masked was to cut down on quarantines, but that doesn't seem to be happening. Again, I don't think it's wrong, you talked about my seven-year-old son up here, he's seven, yes, I'm talking to you, and that's why I'm upset right now, thank you.
You talked to her?
No, I talked to her.
Oh, you talked to her.
Thank you. Next, we have Tabitha Hackett.
Hey, good evening. I'm here tonight because I'm just wondering what percentage of students need to be completely COVID-free before we get rid of the masks? I've looked over your numbers. The last numbers you had were a hundred and ninety-eight, a hundred and ninety-eight students for that two-week span. Considering the amount of students that we have in Forsyth County, that's not even one percent of the students in the school system. I'm looking at your numbers that you're going to present tonight. It's still not even one percent. It's not even hitting a one percent mark there. Between the numbers that you gave at the last meeting and this meeting, the increase doesn't even make it to point five percent. The increase is like point zero 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 one percent. What percentage are we going to say enough is enough? These kids are not getting it, these kids are not getting sick. I've had COVID, my husband's had COVID, my child's not vaccinated, we're not vaccinated. But guess what? My son didn't catch it. My son's been around several, didn't catch it. The quarantine is ridiculous. I have my son, who is on the dyslexic side, is sent out for so many days of school, yet he falls behind. Why? Because he needs that one-on-one. We have students who are needing more speech therapy. Why? Because these masks are keeping them from seeing how somebody actually speaks. The kids need that. We have more in speech therapy than we ever had before, and it's due because they cannot see how a word is formed coming out of a teacher's mouth. TV's not going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Myra Bumgardner.
Good evening, Board, congratulations.
Thank you.
Chair Kaplan. I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas. It's been hard on all of us who come to speak. We're all parents who are concerned about our children, and this is not political. I am here to just confirm what he said. I'm speaking on behalf of one of our members of the conservative women of Forsyth County, whose daughter was also on that volleyball team, who called me Thursday, Friday, while I was in Michigan working hysterically, hysterical crying because her daughter couldn't play in the playoffs because she was exposed to a child who had been vaccinated by her parents who had been vaccinated. The child being unvaccinated is treated discriminatorily. You guys have done such a good job at promoting and encouraging and making us all think about discrimination and equality. You received millions in ESAR funds to fight inequity, inequality, but yet, your policy with the vaccination is discrimination. So if you're not going to lift a discriminating issue such as this, when it's proven that vaccinated individuals are responsible for sharing the virus, even with unvaccinated individuals, if you can't even step up to the plate to cease and desist that discrimination, how do we know that you're going to truly address the discrimination that we're going to have when these masks are gone and this virus is behind us? Please, consider evaluating this discriminatory issue of punishing the unvaccinated kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Maria Mahala?
Yes. Thank you, Board. I come to you because I'm actually a long, I'm a long-term substitute in the district, and the change over to ESS has been devastating. I was told, we'll review your pay, you're going to get benefits. What do you do? Lower the standard. I have a degree in psychology, and now we're talking about bringing in people who have high school education. You know how much I have to pay for these benefits? Over a thousand dollars a month. Do you know how much that means that I take home to provide for me and my three kids? Nine hundred dollars. I can't get Medicaid, I can't get food assistance, but ESS gets one point four million dollars. You know, it really was a kick in the teeth because the substitutes, we did everything that the teachers did during COVID. We stayed up late. Our jobs aren't seven to four, aren't nine to five. I have students on my Zoom, eight o'clock at night, making sure they know what they're doing. But we're still treated like nothing. We were farmed out, we weren't asked, we were treated like Pokemon cards, and it wasn't fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robert Capizzi.
Thank you, Chairman Kaplan.
Thank you.
Superintendent McManus, Board Members. I saw on the docket today, talk about the masks. I'd like you all to consider lifting the mandatory aspect of it, allow folks to wear masks if they so desire. Basically, a mask is a tax on the student's social-emotional learning. And without the examples that have been shared here tonight, just normal communication. It's one thing to be an adult, be able to see, talk. It's another thing for a student who is still learning to not see the mouth move, formation of the words. So I saw on the docket that there was a PowerPoint, and I was kind of excited to see what kind of information you guys were going to use to make a decision. And the PowerPoint turned out to be seven slides. Two of them are just basic info, one's an introduction with the logo, and the other is a board discussion. So there are five slides here that I reviewed to see what information is going to go into this discussion. And basically, we have the fourteen-day COVID metrics. Fourteen hundred people in Forsyth County have it, that's a seventy-eight percent increase. Winston-Salem Forsyth County, a hundred and ninety-nine have it currently, it's a two-point-nine percent decrease over the same period. So that looks pretty good. Then there's mask guidance and mask recommendation. What I was a little confused on is that there's no information that addresses any of the other information that would go into what I would presume would be a board discussion. Dr. All seems to have the majority of everybody's ear on what's going on, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services as well. Where's the info with who's recovered? Where's the info on the benefits of natural immunity? And where is? And where is another medical profession, professional that could come in and maybe speak to these things? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next order of business are the discussion items. First, we will have the 2022 Board of Education Meeting Calendar presented by Deion Jenkins.
Oh, sorry about that. The superintendent's update.
It's easy to miss it. It's all small, right there, listed. So, um, all right, Kevin. So this first one, Kevin wanted me to delete because he did not want me to share this. Um, but we're gonna share it. And Kevin has been named the Regional Technology Director of the Year. So wanted to share that. Um, and we will be, um, he will be, we will, we will be, he will be applying then to the next state, uh, step, which would be the state finalist. And, um, as you all know, Kevin has done amazing work. Just with instructional technology, making sure our students have devices. And last year during shutdown, the, the hotspots, just the, the work that's gone into, to, uh, that he's done has been amazing. So that's one thing. Next, um, we just received word that three of our high schools are being recognized, um, for graduation rates. So this just came in this week, so hot off the press. We have Atkins, um, Early College and Middle College, all with, with very high graduation rates for last school year. So we wanted to celebrate those three. And we'll, I will bring those folks in in January, but I just, I just can't wait on surprises. So wanted to share that. Next. Okay, we already, you already heard about this. So, uh, good luck to all of our players. And one of the things when I got to meet with the coaches the other day and two of our board members had a chance to come, but just to thank, um, the, our coaches, the, both the, the, um, the women's teams who competed over Thanksgiving and now our men, uh, uh, men teams that will compete over Christmas. You know, those of you that have either been the child of a coach or the wife or husband of a coach or anybody related to a coach, you know the extra hours that go in way outside of a school day into weekends. And so thank you to our coaches. They'll be spending part of their holiday break at the, at the classic. And so thank you to, to all of them, our A.D.s, our, and all of our, our school leaders and our students. Good luck to you. I, by the way, the, the outside schools that were present, I did tell them we would be bringing the trophy home in Winston-Salem. So, um, not sure they were too thrilled about that comment, but we're bringing it home. Um, and last but not least, you all don't know about this. This is for you all. We received this, I think it was today, today. Our board is being recognized, um, by, uh, the, the, uh, State Board or the National Board. Actually, this is what it's called for school boards. It's you are receiving an award for training excellence and commitment during the 2021 school year. And you may not know this, but Lisa has to regularly let them know what you're doing as far as training. And thanks to last year and Chair Woodbury, uh, leading the charge and getting the board lots of opportunities for, for extra training, you all are receiving the Silver Bell Award. So congratulations. And I have the certificate that, uh, we'll present to you. So we'll give it to you guys. And then happy holidays to everyone. Um, as we know, the, our break for students begins after next Tuesday. We are in school Monday and Tuesday. Break begins on the 22nd. And we will look forward to our students returning on Wednesday, January 5th. So happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll do the discussion items. Uh, we're gonna start with the 2022 Board of Education Meeting Calendars presented by Deion Jenkins.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the board and Superintendent McManus.
Good evening.
You all have been provided a proposed meeting calendar for the 2022 calendar. You're gonna have to get used to saying 2022. I'm gonna get used to that. Um, and so the calendars are color-coded, or excuse me, the meetings are color-coded so that you know when certain meetings fall on the calendar. There are just a couple of anomalies and adjustments that I wanted to reference tonight and then a conversation about how to handle December of 2022 with that meeting schedule. And so for the month of January, I wanted to just note that there, there appear to be two grievance meetings. The 13th should not be color-coded, it's the 4th. So I just wanted to make that, make that known to you. We'll make that correction. For the month of April, we adjusted those meetings so that we weren't meeting during spring break. Also, for the months of April, May, and June, as you know, we have two grievance sessions those months to account for the choice appeals that may happen. So there are two grievance sessions that month. For the month of July, traditionally, there have been no regular board meetings. Um, occasionally, there's a special call that month, but no regular board meetings. You get a break during the summer. And then for November, we scheduled the meetings to make adjustments for the fact that November the 8th is Election Day. And so we try not to schedule anything on that day, um, during an election year. And then on December, um, we made adjustments given the holidays. As well as in November, there are adjustments, um, for the Thanksgiving holiday. The one thing that I wanted to, to have some discussion about and impose to you as an option is having one meeting during the month of December. Um, I know, um, Ms. Woodbury brought that up before and I think a couple of others have, have, um, brought that up as an option, especially with 2022 being an election year. Um, it might make sense to have that first meeting in December, which is traditionally your organizational meeting. That's also the same night that newly-elected board members will be sworn in. To just have an organizational meeting that meeting and then the rest of the month could be devoted to onboarding the newly-elected board members. I think that was Ms. Jones' suggestion. And so we, we have two meetings on the calendar, um, but if, if the board's inclined, we could reduce that to one meeting and, um, and just, um, have the remainder of the month for newly-elected board meeting business.
I think that's an excellent idea. Is there any discussion?
No, I, I would just echo, um, I, I think it's important for a board to have just that, that time. And I know that, um, there's also been discussion, um, around, you know, um, being able to, most of the time, families are here. I think just with the, um, just with the fact that there are board members who are sitting here that aren't seeking reelection. So you know that you're gonna have several new, new members to the team. And, uh, hopefully you could do a reception or something like that to where you have your family there and have a little bit of time for you to get to know one another and, um, have some of that. And, uh, so I, I think it would be important if we could get through what we need to in November and allow you all, um, who are victorious to, uh, to, to have a little bit of a celebration and, um, you know, kind of come together.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Jenkins, for the, for May of 2022, is, do we know what day the primary is gonna be on? I was thinking about, because we have another Election Day in there that I wanted to think about.
That, that is a very good question. Um, I had not thought about that, but I could certainly investigate that. And, um, if there's a need to make adjustments for that, we can certainly do that.
Okay, good point. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next, we're going to have a discussion about the school improvement plans by Nathan Craver.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, members of the board. Uh, I come to you tonight to present, um, later on in the agenda, you'll be, uh, voting on whether or not to approve the school improvement plan. So just wanted to provide some information around this discussion item as we get started, uh, for this year. As you guys probably are aware, it is general statute that school, local school boards approve all school improvement plans. Uh, just have this here. Uh, it is a recommendation that you approve those plans as a whole group or deny as a whole group. Um, but, uh, and then this just lays out the process there if for some reason you chose not to approve those tonight. Uh, just to give you a little bit of an information about how we go through our process here in Winston-Salem. Uh, we start off actually a year ahead of time, uh, over a year ahead of time. Schools were asked to complete the comprehensive needs assessment in April, uh, between April and June of the previous school year. Schools then review their strategic, our strategic plan and our goal-setting dashboard that we've provided to schools to help determine what their goals should be for this year. Uh, each school plan then has three to five goals, uh, which are aligned to our overall district strategic plan and focused on those highest priority needs in each of those schools. Uh, then they select indicators which are provided through the state system of NC STAR. Uh, and then they write action steps that when implemented will hopefully help them achieve those goals. And then finally, they meet twice a year to review those implementation steps along the way. As they plan, they get feedback from district and state personnel. Uh, myself, uh, provides feedback on each of the plans across the district. Area superintendents meet with their, uh, teams to provide, uh, feedback with principals. School improvement directors are assigned to, our TSI and CSI slash Title I schools to provide feedback. And then principals also provide feedback via peer review. And here's just an example of a, a plan and what this might look like with their goals. So you can see here, this is actually Morgan Elementary's plan. So you can see an exemplar of kind of how they write this. This one, USC has several academic goals as well as a, a, a climate and culture goal about teacher working conditions. So their goal is to improve reading proficiency and math proficiency in K-2 as well as 3-5, uh, for this year. And you can see that they have numbers that are aligned, uh, that will help our district meet those goals for our strategic plan. Uh, and then finally, just some information for you here. All schools have at least one achievement goal in their strategic plan. And all of them were asked to address equity this year. Uh, the equity may be through a standalone goal or it could be action steps within each individual goal. So for example, it might be we're gonna close the achievement gap, uh, for our subgroups. Or it could be, uh, that we've, we've identified, um, some sort of equity issue in our school that we think might be getting, might be a barrier to us achieving, um, proficiency for our classrooms. So they could address it through an action step or through a standalone goal. Uh, and then under the indicators, you'll see that there's five big areas for the indicators. Uh, of those five big groupings, each one of those have key indicators with the exception of planning and operational effectiveness. The state of North Carolina has identified 13, excuse me, 12 indicators in the four areas there. Uh, and then the one that has, uh, planning and operational effectiveness does not have a key indicator. So that's why that one's much lower. But 100% of our schools have selected instructional, uh, excellence indicators. 77% have selected to work on leadership. 72% work on professional capacity. And then 80% have selected goals, uh, around families and communities. And then 14% on that planning and operational effectiveness. And so what we are recommending, uh, tonight is that, uh, each of you had access to all of our school improvement plans and the board materials. So as you get to the later part of the agenda, we are asking that you guys approve those plans as written. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments for me? Any discussion items around the school improvement plan or process?
Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, next, we will have a COVID-19 update and mask recommendation by Katie Key and Frederica Stokes.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent McManus. Um, I would like to start the presentation, um, with an update from Dr. All. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but he has recorded a video to share his update with you all.
Hi, Chris Hall, Wake Forest School of Medicine Infectious Diseases. Sorry to be at your meeting tonight, uh, or attend virtually, um, but I'm, uh, recording this, um, as of Tuesday, December 14th, in the middle of the afternoon. So regarding where we are with COVID, um, in order for you to make your best decisions about masking, um, in the school system, uh, our case numbers are still uncomfortably high, um, in our area. Although they don't seem to have gone up much in the last week or two, um, they have, uh, they have increased to a level uh, after Thanksgiving, um, and we're continuing to see cases at that level. Um, this is roughly, um, in the order of around 33 per 100,000 per day. Um, and, uh, we're running at a test percentage of about 9% of our tests being positive. You remember, uh, I'm saying that the metrics where, um, we could think about safely discontinuing masking all activities in classrooms would be roughly, uh, under 10 cases per 100,000 per day, uh, or a test positivity of 5%. Uh, we're not, uh, really near either of those, nor does it look like, uh, we will be going down to that level um, as we are now entering the respiratory viral season. So the big, uh, question, um, and the somewhat of an elephant in the room is Omicron. Um, Omicron has now been identified in the United States. Um, it is likely to become our dominant, uh, variant, um, probably by the end of January, maybe even earlier. Omicron's an incredibly transmissible virus compared to Delta or other COVID viruses. Um, in fact, it's probably about three times more transmissible than COVID. So, uh, we're gonna have to keep a very close eye on that as far as what we want to do with masking as we get into the respiratory viral season. Regardless, um, I think that, uh, we will still have a time, um, during the current school year where we can take our masks off. It's just finding the, uh, the safest time to do that. Right now, I think would be early. I think it would be, uh, a condition that would allow increased transmission, not only in COVID, but other respiratory viruses, but particularly in COVID. Um, and, uh, and our kids' infection rates would go up. So, um, masks are a way for us to continue to do what we want to do uh, and to, uh, have, uh, our school, uh, classroom, our academics and our after-school activities, including athletics. And there's very little downside. Masks, uh, do not really have any deleterious effects on kids. Uh, and the latest misinformation is that they cause nosebleeds. Actually masking increases the humidity in the nose, uh, rather than decreases it, which, uh, and decreased humidity is one of the big, uh, one of the big factors that causes nosebleeds. So, uh, with that, I would recommend we keep our masks on, um, and then we start the new school year at least, uh, the first few days with our masks on and see how things go. Um, and, uh, we continue to reassess, um, like we have to. Thanks, um, and I appreciate your attention.
Just a few brief updates. To share information regarding Forsyth County, um, as Dr. All stated, we are still in the high area. Between November 23rd and December 7th, positive cases was around 1405. And so that's about 9.1% of the county, which he indicated earlier. In addition, when we look at the reported cases, um, in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, we are, um, between November 23rd and December 7th, there were 199 students reported, um, as having, um, a positive case of COVID. Um, the case was a decrease, um, but we were looking at the span where we were out of school, um, for the holidays, for Thanksgiving. Uh, we wanted to keep a special eye on the sports and performing arts data since we made some, um, changes, um, during the last board meeting. And so still our numbers with sports and performing arts are relatively low, um, very low. Um, looking between 1201 and, um, December 8th, um, we only had about six, um, sports-related positives that was reported to us. Um, and then it was 11 close contacts impacted during that time. And then five performing arts, um, and two. And so it's not linked to a specific performance. These were just students that were, happened to be in a performing arts. And so just to clarify that information, so very low numbers, um, when we look at the changes that we made for sports and for performing arts at this point. Um, mask guidance, um, strong, um, school, um, toolkit, uh, we're still, um, following that. Um, and that's the recommendation from, um, NC DHHS. Um, please keep in mind that Forsyth County is still under, um, the mask mandate. Um, Winston-Salem is still under the mask mandate and we're still in that high. is still under the mask mandate, and we're still in that high level of community transition at this point. Those are the recommendations. As it relates to us tracking the indoor athletics and the performing arts, we see that we haven't seen any types of spikes in those particular areas. Are there any questions or would like to open it up for board discussion?
So even the, during sports and performances, their unmask, we're not seeing an increase? We've actually seen the decrease, right?
That was, yeah, between that, we've only been looking at those numbers for the last two weeks.
Right.
And it was, the numbers are really low for those particular areas right now.
So I had just a, I mean, I feel, I don't feel like we probably even need to talk about the mask right now. I think we are, I mean, I, you know, from the beginning, I've definitely been mask optional, but I can also see, you know, as, as, as a superintendent and staff, when you have a city of Winston-Salem that's under a mask mandate, and, you know, regardless of what this board would decide, those, those schools would still have to abide. And then you would have county schools that could be optional. I mean, so I can understand why that would, would not be something that, that, that you or staff would feel comfortable talking about. I think one of the things that has come up tonight, and I think you can help us with clarification as to where, where we're going with that, and that is about the, the quarantining of vaccinated students and unvaccinated students. And so to be clear, that's not our policy, but this is, this is guidance, I guess, that's coming to health departments. Can we talk just a little bit about that? And what, what, you know, for the record, what, what is that? And when does the seven days start versus the 10 days?
And so you're, you're right. The strong toolkit is the direction the DHHHS has provided, the guidance that they have provided. After a couple of meetings ago, we requested to go to seven versus 10 days. And so Dr. Oll, he was here, he made some statements. And so we met with the health department and Dr. Oll, and we came up with doing the seven days. So it is at the discretion of the health department. So in the toolkit, it indicates that. So it's seven or 10, but it's at the discretion of the health department. And we have been following the 10 from our health department. So once we had that discussion about two weeks, I think last month, once we had that discussion, we did go back and meet with the health department. We did go back and we met with Dr. Oll, and the recommendation was to move it from 10 to seven. So five days, they would be, if they were close contact, they were quarantined for five days. At the five-day mark, they would be able to take a test. And if the test comes back negative, they can come back after the seventh day of school. That will start when we return back. And the reason why we determined January is a start date is that we needed, we needed time to train our staff appropriately. And so what we've done over the last two to three weeks, we have brought all of our COVID coordinators at the school level in for a face-to-face training. And our nurse, Katie Key, and her COVID coordinator team has trained those individuals face-to-face. We've talked about what the fifth day looks like, how do we document that, and then when they can come back on the eighth day. So Dr. Oll and the health department agreed for us to go from 10 to seven with the understanding that we would train our staff appropriately. And so we'll start in January. As soon as we come back, all of our staff have been trained. I think there were a few people that couldn't attend our last training. And so we're opening up an additional date prior to Tuesday when we end for the winter break. And so I feel very good that we did a great training. I feel good that we had the opportunity to meet with them face-to-face and not virtual, where we were able to really explain to them, this is the process, this is five days, what day is the fifth day, when will they be eligible to come back? And so we have made that adjustment, and we will start there as soon as we come back from school for winter break.
Just one more question. So the testing piece, and we were talking about they could, you know, if they have a negative test. I know that we were having difficulties finding staff. We have test, we have the ability for tests, but are we able as a district to help with or administer those tests with parental consent on that fifth day? Or are they still having to, to get those tests on their own?
Right now, we did speak at a principal meeting, and some of them, you know, volunteered to want to start having testing at their schools. So we're in the process of setting that up. But we did not have the staff, the health department has not hired the additional staff, so that we can have someone in our schools and not add it on to the COVID coordinator's role, but we would have someone in our schools that would actually do the testing. So some schools have actually volunteered. So we're trying to get that started up. We're also still partnering with the health department. They're thinking of some creative ways, some pilot programs, possibly with the home test that could possibly be given to make it more equitable for families that cannot, you know, go out and purchase a test or get a test.
Just get it scheduled. It's kind of, kind of challenging.
Yep. So we're in the process, we want to bring testing. We just want to make sure that we have the staff. And we've already sent the schools that agreed to, like, want a pilot. We've sent them the modules so that they can go ahead and start getting the staff that'll be doing that trained. And so we are in the process of making sure that we can start with at least some pilot schools. And then hopefully, in the new year, the health department will be able to go ahead and employ the individuals so that we can get it in all of our schools, so we can start the testing with parental consent, so that they can come back on that fifth day test and then be ready to go after the seventh day.
And the, and just, Dr. Stokes, just for what we heard from comments from, from folks from the floor, we, we are, we're, what we're hearing, is that accurate, that basically if, and I think we talked about this at the November meeting, that if, if we, if, if you are not vaccinated and there's an exposure and you are asymptomatic, you must, right now, under what they're saying, you must quarantine for that seven day. That applies to the unvaccinated. However, if you are vaccinated, you were exposed by the exact same person, you say, I have it, and I expose you too, and you're not vaccinated, you're vaccinated, you're, you're quarantining, neither have symptoms, but the unvax, the vaccinated can just keep going to school, doing whatever.
The vaccinated will, it will have, will continue to go to school. However, they are to monitor their symptoms.
Right.
For the next, you know, seven to 10 days, they should be monitoring their symptoms because if they start with a cough, or they lose their sense of taste or smell, then we would want to make sure that they're, you know, get tested and get excluded. But you're correct. The guidance that we follow does, and that we have to follow, because it's not an option, the guidance that we follow is that if you are unvaccinated and you are a close contact, then we do exclude. But again, we're looking at that adjustment in January. It won't be the 10, it will be the 7, but you do have to produce a negative test after day five.
Board member, Bohannon?
Thank you. Dr. Stokes, so just, excuse me, to that point, do we know why, so it seems like, do we know why that is, that there's a difference between how we're treating or, or within the toolkit, the guidance for students who are vaccinated versus aren't relative to the quarantine?
I'm not a medical professional, so I won't even try to, I, I know that is the guidance. So that, that is the guidance. So I don't, I want to be able to, I don't want to give you the kind of why behind it or guess, but that's, that's the instructions. And that's what has been done ever since the toolkit has come out, the vaccinated. And once the vaccine started, you know, that's when it was okay, probably because the likelihood of you being exposed and actually getting it diminished. However, we know that we're dealing with Delta and that vaccinated people have contracted it, so.
Right. And so I ask just because I think sometimes, especially for people who might not understand the sort of impetus for those decisions, it almost seems like it, it can, I think it can feel like to some that we're following this guidance, but when, when the question is asked, why, some people just want kind of definitive answers. And I know that sometimes that can make people feel uncomfortable if we don't have them, so.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Leah.
I, I'm just wondering, is there consideration for, I know there's vaccinated versus unvaccinated. What about for kids who've had COVID?
Yes. If they've had COVID in the last 90 days, then they wouldn't be excluded, correct? They wouldn't be excluded, as long as they're asymptomatic. So if you had COVID in the last 90 days, then you wouldn't be excluded.
Board member, Calvert Hayes.
You know, I'm sitting here, and I'm wondering why we're even voting to start with. If there's a mandate and it's already put into place, why does it matter how we vote? I mean, I'm just having a hard time realizing why we are sitting up here and, and we're voting. It's already been said that the mask, I think that was by the governor, you know, we were going to wear the mask. So, I mean, why are we voting? Somebody help me with that.
Unfortunately, the state board has decided that it's a mandate. We have to bring this once a month, and it has to be voted on by the local board.
But I mean, we don't have one medical doctor up here.
There are districts that have optional masking. We're voting on the masking thing. And there are districts that are optional masking.
Well, you know, we tried that, and that got voted down. So I don't understand why are we doing this? Somebody tell me.
Because they said we got to vote on it every month.
We have to every month.
But I mean, it doesn't matter.
Yes. Board member, James?
Yeah, I was just, and, and not that, that we have to discuss this at length right now, but I would like, just for my colleagues to consider, I think that we have, we have seen resolutions from Union County and a resolution that was just passed from Randolph County. And, you know, they are, they are basically asking, because now there's, you know, vaccines are readily available for all-age students, if you choose to do that and that makes you feel safe. That there's a lot of other things that are going on. We realize that there's also, I think as Dr. Stokes said, that, you know, maybe folks didn't realize there were going to be all these different variants. They don't seem to hold up as well the vaccines to, to some of those. And so we are seeing a lot of vaccinated, you know, and fully vaccinated. I guess that's two shots. I'm not sure if that's two shots and a booster or what that's going to end up looking like. But with all of those things out there, and we all know, and we've all said, that attendance in school is so important. You know, one of our great social workers talked about that tonight. Rhonda said, we, we've stayed open and, because the kids need to be here. But yet we are excluding children from the classroom. And in those high numbers, they don't end up with COVID. I mean, some of that exposure. So all I'm asking is, would, would colleagues consider at some point, you know, also us passing a resolution for, for, for North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to revisit the guidance in the toolkit that we have to go by, that, that our staff has to bring to us and that the county health department has to go by as well. But as we are moving into 2022, could we encourage them to take a look at this? And because I, I do feel like we are, that, that the quarantines, the, the days, and, you know, vaccinated versus unvaccinated, that was in that toolkit. And that toolkit came out at the beginning of the school year. And so a lot of things have changed since then. I would just ask if you would consider that at some point.
Board member Crowley?
I'm in favor of it.
I think it's something we need to talk about.
Yeah, I think, and, and I think that what wasn't present at the beginning of the year that is now, is that both vaccinated and unvaccinated are getting sick. Now, there's a difference in how sick they may be getting, but, but at the same time, that, you know, I hate, there's learning loss going on if we're going to have kids out of, out of class. And I think that we, there's a lot of things to consider during, when it, when people have been exposed as to, and we need to start looking at that because for children to stay out of school a long time, and I know there's differences that, I think the toolkit, if I understand it correctly, has differences whether you're exposed in a family situation or whether you have been exposed in your, you know, in a school situation, or in a, you know, whatever, sports or whatever. So, I mean, there are lots of different variants of all that. And I, you know, I think for us to come up with some scenarios, and I think we hear those scenarios lots, that, you know, we're, we've had children at home for a long time, and maybe, you know, for, for, I mean, they haven't gotten COVID or, you know, whatever. So I think, I think there's lots of things we need to, to look at in different, and maybe also, I think we had talked at one point about some, some systems that have gone to a school-by-school, the number of cases that have metrics that go with the number of cases that have at a school, whether you be optional until you reach a certain point. I don't know how doable that is for us. I know it might be very, you know, might be difficult, but I think that's worth maybe looking at, at the same time, too, because, you know, we've, just looking at the numbers that we have in schools, some schools have, you know, they haven't had any cases, and others are very high sometimes. So, I don't know, just, just lots of different things maybe to look at. Learning loss is, is an issue, too, so.
Board member, Bohannon?
So I think relative to Board Member Jones' point about a resolution, I think it'd be more than appropriate at the first policy committee of the year for us to have some language to look at around a potential resolution, because I think that I'd agree kind of at this point, some things need to be revisited. So I think that'd be perfectly appropriate. I'd, I'd agree with that.
Yes, thank you.
You're the chair now, Alex.
It's a great idea. Any more discussion?
Would we consider taking a baby step forward by having masking optional while students are stationary? So while they're at their desk and not moving, they could take their masks down. But when they're in transit, and they would be exposing more people and passing by more people in the halls, then mask would need to go up. It's, it's not a full-on optional masking, which I don't think we have five votes for, but it would be a step toward that and see how our numbers go with it. I mean, we, we took this baby step forward with performers and athletes, and, you know, it didn't come back where numbers were going through the roof. So why not take, take another step when we come back in January of...
I think, wait, go ahead.
I was going to say, too, when, does anyone know when, when the city will vote on another, it's based on metrics? Okay, so, all right, so.
I mean, is the city enforcing, so do they have a, do they have a clause in their mandatory masking that when you're playing sports, you don't have to wear it? I mean, we're going to have the Frank Spence, or, or we, we're, I mean, so, or, so is, is, so is it do, I mean, seems to me it's a little...
So remember, our, so I don't know when the count, I don't, I can't answer the question about the city, but remember, our, our, it's our, ours is when they are actually on the court or in the performance, when they sit back down. So if you're thinking about a classroom, so our classrooms, if you, if you walk through classrooms, students are sitting, students are not separated like last year. They're sitting, you know, four together, they're, they're sitting normally. So they're not, they're not apart. So basically, the whole reason we've continued to say, unless something changes, that we have got to make sure that our kids that are sitting there, you know, for, for six hours pretty much, with someone that could potentially be positive, they would definitely have to quarantine. The rest of the children would have to be excluded, not quarantine, but be excluded. That's why with the sports and the, and the entertainment, you go up, you sing, or you go up, you dance, you come offstage, you are masked again. So that was our trial. I, I mean, when we come back on January, I think our next vote is January 11th, we'll have another, this week, of performances, which is a big deal with the holidays coming. There's lots of performances this week. I'll be at one Friday night at one of our high schools, but there, there's... schools, but there, there's all week, and I think that we can bring more data back at that time for last week and this week, because I think we stopped that data that I saw on the slide on the 8th, I think was the last day, if I'm correct, I believe. But anyway, so I think that we, let it, let's, again, sitting in class, I understand your rationale around they're stationary, but it's, it's not about stationary versus walking, it's about that you're sitting right next to that kid all day long, and so they will definitely, if you're not, if you're not masked, if one of you is not masked, so even if it's optional, and you're not masked and they're masked, they would be excluded for that period of time. Now luckily, it'll be a shorter period of time, but still, our biggest thing is trying to avoid exclusion. The idea of trying to address the toolkit and get that changed, that, that would be a, to me, a great start, but again, with the toolkit, our votes have been about trying to keep as many kids in school as possible, and the data, and we stopped putting the data, we were giving you tons of data slides that showed how many students we avoided excluding because of having the mask on, and that's why we've continued to push, to push that. And as I've talked to superintendents that have gone mask optional, they very quickly had to exclude many, many students. I mean, six schools in a neighboring community, a community that were mask optional had to go back to mask because of the number of exclusions. So again, we want, we hope that we are starting to progress, and if the county, if the health department, Dr. Oll, the health department, the city, if we were all to get on the same page and move forward together, I think that's important as well, because for our school district, I mean, we've got to be on the same page with our local health department. Some of the districts that are doing something different altogether, it's a decision with their local health department. So I just, I want to just say that, like, we are, you know, our goal is not to have these masks on all year, I can promise you that, but we want to make sure that we are following the advice of our local health department and that we're on the same page with them. So again, that's why, if, I think when we come back January, let's bring more data back to the table, I'm looking at our team, very specific data, and let's make a decision that night, literally, we're talking, it will be just two more weeks, because it's, we're out next Tuesday, kids will be home for two weeks, and then when we come back, we'll have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, and we'll be back here voting on Tuesday. So, you know, I, I'm not saying that we are not open to thinking through new thoughts about, you know, just, we've said it very clearly, when we make the change, just know that we're going to be dealing with more exclusion, so we're going to have to, we just have to know that, once we start to make those changes, there is, there is a great potential for more exclusions.
So I think to Dana's point about the city mandate, how can we have athletes and performers unmasked indoors in city limits?
So there are some, I know that there's a public speaking provision for that local order, and so I think that within the confines of that, like, one of our, our necess, the things that we've allowed for use, I think would fall under that, but again, I can't speak to the specifics, I just know that there's been provisions added to accommodate for things like that.
I would just want to say not to even think that I'm speaking on behalf of all educators, but I would like to suggest to this community that as professional educators, our training prevents us from taking, you know, relaxed kind of policies when it comes to the safety of children and, and staff members, and so I know that for the community at large that may not be in this ecosystem of trying to sustain this system for the safety of first our children and then staff, it's definitely frustrating, but I would ask for the patience that as professional educators, we're trained this way. Like, we, we wouldn't know how to probably recommend really anything other than what's being primarily recommended throughout our state and throughout this country because of what's at hand, and that's the safety of children. And to the point of a lot of those of you who are concerned around, I think, well, we don't really know that per se this affects children at, you know, devastating rates, and that's what's scary, we don't, we don't know, so we don't want to make hard-line decisions or decisions that put one child at risk. Nevertheless, 53,000, so I would just, you know, respectfully, you know, acknowledge on behalf of professional educators that we're trying to do our best to really make sure that all children, all staff members are as safe as possible, and we understand that that's frustrating to this community, but I think we've done a good job with just agreeing to disagree and moving forward.
Thank you. Now, the next order of business are the action items. The first is consider approval of the 2022 Board of Education meeting calendar. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Next is consider approval of school improvement plans. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Oh, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Next, consider approval of district mandate, mask mandate, a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, Ms. Brammer, are you in favor or opposed? I'm not sure what her vote is, but there are three opposed.
This is Elizabeth, this is on the mask?
Yes.
And I am in favor of continued masking.
Yes, I see your hand, thank you. Motion passes. Consider approval of salary schedules? Move to approve? Second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have consent item, agenda items, we have five items on the consent agenda. First is consider approval of general personnel report, next is consider approval of October 5, 2021 special call board meeting minutes, next is to consider the approval of the October 7, 2021 special call board meeting minutes, and next is to consider approval of the October 12, 2021 board work session minutes, and consider approval of the October 28, 2021 board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve all five? Thank you. Second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? I think that's unanimous. Thank you so much. So announcements, do we have any announcements? Except for happy holidays, of course. Okay, so before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on any topic, let me say goodnight. Thank you to our Cable 2 viewers. This will conclude our broadcast, and once again, happy holidays.